All right, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, make a note, everybody's present tonight. Full business, approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of February 6, 2025 were provided for review. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 6, 2025 as presented.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, I see there's no one in the audience that isn't tied to an agenda item, so we'll pass that. New business. Item number two is Waste Management Contract Extension. The Waste Management notified the city three months ago of a potential rate increase at the conclusion of our current contract, which is set to expire on 28th February 25. Waste Management provided options to allow the city to offset some costs by establishing recycling every other week. The city put out a survey to residents to gauge their interest in an every other week recycling. And over fifty-seven percent of our residents prefer to keep recycling weekly in spite of the three dollar and thirty-eight cents a month increase. Waste Management current rate is eighteen twenty-seven, when including administrative cost totals and even nineteen dollars a month for our residents. Waste Management is proposing a rate of twenty-one sixty-five for the same service to our residents, potentially with more administrative costs. According to Waste Management, the lion's share of the increase is the result of increased wages for their drivers. So I need a motion to approve the three-year extension with Waste Water Management.
Go move.
Yeah, we have any discussion?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Mr. Blessing.
Good evening.
Go ahead, you start.
Okay. I'd like an explanation as to what happened when we were told that the trash would be picked up tomorrow. Then the city received an email after hours that the pickup was gonna occur today. And the city and some of their employees have taken a huge beating over this, with something that wasn't their fault.
Certainly. I'm happy to explain. So let me just tell you that whenever these weather events, be it snow, ice, or temperatures that frostbite you in minutes, there is never a solution that satisfies everyone. My operations team, which I do not envy their jobs, has to decide what is the path of least resistance in a multiple worst-case scenario situation. So as is normal, when we have one day of inclement weather, normally everything is just delayed a day, right? Which was initially the plan. As things progressed, and although there wasn't additional snow, these temperatures that, I mean, my kids haven't been to school in a month, but have caused all these dangerous environmental issues, it was decided that there was no catching up, right? We had too many equipment, too many employees that are off the streets due to the temperatures. So my operations team, when they have these situations, believe it or not, they do their absolute best to prioritize all of my municipal contracts. No, it might not seem like it. Their intent, and I'm not a hundred percent certain when this decision was made, it was made yesterday afternoon, their intent was, there's a solution here where we can actually help the City of Lansing out. This is what my operations team thought. We can make it where they don't have to endure a delayed collection. Their intent was to return the City of Lansing to normal and not have a delay. On paper, that looks fantastic. I applaud their intent. I have meetings with them all the time, and I tell them, hey, my municipal customers come first. And it, they're showing it. The problem here is, again, I'm not certain when this decision was made, but I was informed of it at about 5:30 PM yesterday. And I think my email didn't come out until six, because for thirty straight minutes, I fought this. Because as you agree, although that might have been a great solution, the timing of it was terrible. There is no way that we can communicate that to you and your staff. And I apologize to some of them for the heart attack.
Thousands of citizens.
Sure, right, there's no way that can be communicated appropriately. I lost that battle until this morning, when we were finally able to let our operations leadership know that, thank you for your intent, and we appreciate you trying to help Lansing, but actually this caused more problems than it was worth. And when I'm able to explain that to them, we were able to quickly reverse the situation and put everything back to one day delay, which is where we're at today. So the services would be collected tomorrow, which was the original intent. So again, I mean, no excuses. It is something that I'm gonna work real hard and never to do again. I mean, ultimately, I had to do what I was told to do. But I just wanted to let you know that the intent is always to prioritize municipal contracts like Lansing. And for as failed as this attempt was, that's really what they were trying to do. They were trying to bring Lansing back on to their regular service day, so there would be no delays. And maybe they decided that at noon, I don't know. But I didn't get that information until it was way too late. And that's really what started the whole problem. Again, it was about eight-thirty or so, I think, when we finally got everything ironed out and reversed back to the original delay. So everything is running smooth. Again, I apologize profusely to your staff. I understand that, you know, that caused a lot of phones to erupt here and for me as well. But that's really kind of what brought all this on. It wasn't malicious, it was just poor planning, although the intent was to bring you back to your normal schedule.
I don't question the intent. We've been telling people all week, Friday, because that's what you told us.
Correct.
And then after hours, when there's no way now to get the word out, no way it's gonna happen. People went to work, whatever, at my house. My dog started barking, which meant something was going on. And my wife said, they're coming for the trash. And I said, no, they're not, they're coming tomorrow. And she said, you better catch the guy, because he's driving down the street. And I was the only one, because I was home, to get my trash out. I don't know how anybody thought that notifying the city after hours was a good idea.
I concur. It's not a good idea.
I'm not as mad as Gene is. My wife called me and said, oh, they're coming through the neighborhood. I assumed that they were doing a preliminary pickup to make it faster for tomorrow. And you are coming tomorrow. If you came today and said, no, we're not coming back tomorrow, then I would be mad.
Sure.
But you're coming back tomorrow, so I could care less.
Well, it is, it is, I appreciate that, but it is the optics and to Mr. Kirby's point, I mean, communication, we're better than this, so that's something that we're gonna fix moving forward.
But you can't, but you can't control the weather, though.
No.
I'm not, you know, I get that part.
Sure.
I worked outside for forty years.
Right.
I get that. I'm talking about one little part.
I know exactly which part.
That screwed the whole thing up.
Yes.
I get the cold weather, the snow, I get you guys have a hard time getting help. Who wants to work out in this? I get all that. I just don't know why anybody thought, hey, we'll let them know after hours that we've changed our mind.
For what it's worth, I do appreciate you not trying to stand there and BS and say, you know, flooding our fall, you know. I like the fact that you're taking ownership, so.
We've had a lot of discussions about some processes that we can streamline. Again, I think the decision to make that change happened earlier in the day. And maybe, maybe that would have been possible if we could have gotten it early enough. I still think anything more than twenty-four hours in advance is too less, too little of time. But the way it worked is not something that we're going to repeat.
Long those same things, but something that you are probably not in charge of, your app.
Yeah.
Hit the service, I heard the trucks, I hit service that says pickups today. And I said a few choice words to myself, and I went directly to your alerts. I'm gonna read you the alert. Your service for Wednesday, February the nineteenth, has been rescheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh.
I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, so I, the city didn't know anything about it.
Sure.
I called your company, and they said, the app is having issues.
So, that's correct.
Do I go by the service, do I go by what you said, city, or do I go by your alerts?
Sure. So I was explaining, and we're working with both Ken and Beth on some communication out and some other tools. The app was created for, I don't wanna say normal, we're all normal, regular customers. When you have a municipal customer, every one of your addresses is in our system. But it's in the system differently than if you were just an open-market resident that lived somewhere else, and you had anybody to choose from, and you chose Waste Management, you went online, and you signed up your stuff, and you get your own bill to your house and all that stuff. All that information's in there, and it's a very accurate app. When we're dealing with municipal customers, and this is something that our digital team rolled out, and then we're kind of fixing from the back end, the municipal addresses, the municipal accounts for each and every one of your addresses is different than the accounts for the majority of our customers, like our open-market customers. So the app was rolled out, and it didn't really take into consideration some of the problems that those accounts, when they're municipal accounts, they're just shell accounts. It just has an address, and it says City of Lansing, and that's all it says. There's some ways we can fix that. Rolling out the app, I think, I mean, we mentioned it, I, you know, it's problematic for municipalities right now. But like I said prior to the meeting, I was talking with your staff, and we've got some solutions there. There's a way that if you were to go into the app and make some changes to your account, we can, we can correct those. We don't want to put all the burden, obviously, on the resident, you know, since it's an IT error, really, when it comes down to it. So we're looking at some solutions to get some accuracy on that. Now, why, if you were to put in your address and you got completely wrong service information? I mean, that does sound like a crazy one-off, but we can.
It gets better.
Sure.
Today, I got alert that says your cycle service for Thursday, February twenty-seventh, has been rescheduled to today.
So again, I, without having to.
Says they got the date right.
Good, well, good.
Okay, so it took them four times to get it, so.
Sure.
Just letting you know that there's a flip there, and be thankful that there's only one person instead of the whole city.
Sure. If, yeah, and I mean, I don't know, I, would you mind if I followed up with you? I mean, I'd like to get, I get that. I'd like to kind of try to recreate it. You know, if I could use your address and go in and just see, you know, where the things went astray? That would probably help us out a lot.
Be your guinea pig.
Okay.
Because one of the things I was wanting to do is get the app information from you for our connections. But I would like to know that's working right.
Yeah. Oh, right, yes, and like I said, I was working with some of the staff. We've got some informations and some instructions on how to do it correctly. But I wanna make sure that, before we proceed, that we look into the problems you're having on the app as well.
All right, anything else? Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to know, for the duration of this contract, were you locked in at this rate, or is there an annual escalator?
Well, there was never really a decision on the term of the contract. If the term is longer than a year, then yes, there would be an annual escalator.
Okay.
And that was one of the discussion items we had, I think, last time, is do you wanna do a one-year? Or did you wanna do something more than one year? We're open to either one. There's pros and cons to it. Obviously, there's an annual escalator. There is some security in a long-term contract. I mean, one of the reasons, just to be frank, that the increase that the city is receiving is maybe larger than it has in the past is because it's been under these three- and five-year contracts for so long that had smaller annual escalators. So eventually, that kind of catches up. So there's one of the pros of kind of having a longer term. You know you can cap what's about to happen. I mean, one-off, one-year contracts, in essence, we'd be doing the same thing in about eight months, right?
I disagree with what you just said. Because in the middle of the contract, you came and asked us to increase our rates. Remember that?
When was this?
Didn't he?
Was this, yeah, for two, in two thousand nineteen?
We had a contract with you, with rates on it, but you came to the council meeting and asked us for a higher rate.
Sure.
So you're wrong about that statement. Just calling you out, so.
There are some one-off issues that could come up, I suppose, you're correct.
That was the.
So what we're voting on?
Chinese.
China decided they weren't gonna take any more of our recycling.
That's still.
You're gonna blame that on China.
That's still in effect, getting China to take the recycle?
Uh, actually, no. We have completely, it helped us completely change the way we've processed all of our recycling. Seventy or eighty percent, I think, of all of the recycling that we collected prior to two thousand nineteen went overseas, mainly to China. I think it was like ninety percent. Today, about eighty-five percent of all of the recyclable materials we collect in the United States stays domestic. About, one hundred percent of all the plastic that we collect in the United States is a company policy, we will not export it due to plastics in the ocean, right? But what, that move happened in two thousand nineteen is it really built up the recycling infrastructure in the United States. And there are a lot of domestic mills now that are taking the recycling and using it instead of virgin stock, which is a good story, I guess, but most of it stays in the United States at this point.
Does that mean it's more money for you and cheaper for us?
We don't do anything with recycling other than bundle it and give it away and sell it, right? If we can, or pay to have someone take it. I mean, that's really what, you know, our recycling process is, is we collect and sort, and then we send it to mills, auto industry, paper mills, and stuff like that, that, you know, make new products out of it.
I believe in that Third Amendment, number one, was the city could review each year what was going on, and then number three, they could also, on their end, they could also ask for an annual increase depending on the Bureau of Labor.
Yeah, if you guys look at page twelve is what Mr. Gardner's talking about. But yeah, extension of term, so this is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight, shall automatically renew for successive renewal terms of one year each, unless either party gives the other party written notice. So that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. So if we do a three-year, or if we do a one-year, either way, we re-review it every year.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about this whenever, and, yeah.
But your, but your rate's not locked in. That's the problem.
Well, the other one, they can have an annual increase anyway, so, depending on the BLS.
But if you do like a five-year contract, and you lock in rates per year with increases, they're locked in. If you go year by year, they can come back to you and increase it by twenty percent, thirty percent, or whatever. But if you have a rate, a rate increase that's ten percent over next year, and then five percent the next year, and then ten percent the next year, you know what the rate's gonna be in the contract.
I think most of the.
Correct.
Most of the increases recently have been based on CPI. But unfortunately, the last couple of years CPI has been pretty high, so.
Anything else?
A question. So what are we voting on? A three-year contract or a one-year?
We made a motion to approve the three-year extension with Waste Management, that was the motion.
And then with the review every year, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we review it every year.
Every year, we have the option to review it, but we can't just call up Waste Management and say we're done. We would have to give them.
Oh, no, I understand.
Ninety-day.
But we're locked in for three years.
Yes.
Right.
If we vote yes.
Right.
Can we do, I guess I should ask that, before we have the meeting, whether we can do a one-year and then go to three years? Or should we just do three years and just review it every year?
Yeah. I mean, if we do three years, we still can get out with a notice.
Yeah, we can just continue discussing it, yeah.
I have a second question. Second question is, it's a flat rate for all our residents, is that correct? A new rate for all our residents? We don't have a reduced rate for seniors or anything like that?
I think we were still planning to do the senior rate, yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, that's, that's something that we do internally, that's not anything Waste Management does. Like, that's something that we do internally, the city.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, got it. Because I got a couple questions, people ask me, ask me about that. Got a couple calls about that.
People, as long as they bring in a form of government ID and they're over sixty-five, we give them a two-dollar-a-month decrease.
Great, thank you.
What was that, Tim? How much? Two dollars?
Two dollars a month.
Okay, is that it?
Good.
Okay, everybody good? All right, so I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Brungardt?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thanks, Mr. Blessing.
Thank you.
Department heads, anybody? No takers? City attorney?
Another report, ma'am.
Tim? City administrator?
So I know some of you guys have been receiving emails about rezones, and I wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about that procedure, as well as brief you on the meeting last night, and kind of talk to you guys about things that are gonna be coming up. First off, I think you guys already know this, but I'll say it, so it's public and a recap for you guys, too. Any landowner in Lansing can request a rezone. They usually do not come from the city. It's not me and Josh sitting behind a desk saying, let's rezone this property. Rezones come typically from the property owner. We received a rezone recently for a property on McIntyre. We went through the process and procedure for that. There was a planning commission meeting last night. Lot of discussion, lot of points brought up, pro, for. And the planning commission did what the planning commission is there to do. They made a recommendation, and we'll be making a recommendation to you guys. And that'll be coming up at a future city council meeting. One thing that I do wanna talk a little bit about, too, because I think, you know, normally, when there's rumors going around, it's typically not even worth addressing them because they're so ridiculous. But, but one rumor I do wanna mention, because there's people out there saying the city refused to give people the names of the planning commission members, and that might be, it's almost kind of insulting how silly that is. People reached out to us, asking for the emails of the planning commission members. And all of those people are volunteers, so they don't have city email addresses. So we didn't want to give everybody in town the personal email addresses of everybody on the planning commission. Especially with a contentious meeting, we didn't want to give personal email addresses of volunteers to people. I don't know where the rumor mill went off the rails, but us not giving personal email addresses of volunteers turned into the city's refusing to give us the names of the planning commission members. If you show up to the meetings, they all have nameplates. So that was kind of disappointing, hearing that, and hearing that rumor being perpetuated. But, you know, again, it was a contentious meeting last night. The planning commission did what the planning commission is there to do. They'll make a recommendation to you guys, and that will be on the agenda at a future meeting. One last thing that I'll mention, too, and this is where it is slightly confusing. The property that was discussed last night is right next to the property where we're discussing a new residential subdivision. Right next to it. Different owners, different projects, different goals, two completely different projects that are just right next to each other. And where this is going to get even more confusing, I think there's another rezone coming on McIntyre in the near future. So, again, these are coming from the property owners. They're not coming from me, they're not coming from Josh, they're coming from the property owners. And it's kind of a coincidence that all three of them are coming back to back to back. So it is a little bit confusing, but I did wanna talk to you guys about that a little bit, because I know you guys have been getting your emails blown up, so.
I mean, it sounds like the sewer's paying dividends, an economic melt in front.
It really is, and, you know, we, especially you guys who have been here for a while, we did a lot of sewer projects that really there wasn't the best ROI. It was almost more correcting deficiencies, whereas this sewer project certainly has had a pretty, we haven't seen the ROI yet, but it's generating a lot of interest, yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna say, I don't think it's the city's business to give out anybody's personal email address. Just period.
Yeah, and I, it, I will tell you, too, internally, this sparked all of this discussion of, do we start giving all of our volunteers city email addresses? So we're opening the door to every Prab member having an email, and so it, we've spoken about this a lot internally, and maybe there will be more changes coming in the future. But that was a discussion we had of, you know, is everyone on the tree board, are we gonna start giving them email addresses? Are we giving every library board member city email addresses, so we don't have this again? So, so those are discussions that are ongoing, but that was the background for how that started.
Well, if the policy changes, it changes. But to be giving out personal email addresses, I think I heard somebody say, is that even legal? Which may be a good question.
I mean, the bottom line is, if they're a volunteer and appointed by the council, then people can call the council member.
Right.
I mean, that's what we're here for. We don't want people calling the volunteers. Doing business that we assign them to do, so. I mean, that's what I would reiterate out there, if anybody wants a name or something of a volunteers, like.
Call Tony.
Call your council member, Don Stednikah.
For calling the mayor, Tony.
If it was Don, you know, I mean, I use that as an example, Don.
No, but I agree, you know, that's our job.
Yeah.
We do the front office work.
These people didn't run for office, they didn't, as we say time and time again up here, volunteers provide valuable asset to the city. They save the city a lot of money.
And we don't need.
We have a hard time getting them, let's don't drive them away.
Who should have been the communication POC for that? How did it go from zero to a hundred miles an hour in twenty-four hours?
Social media.
I was gonna say it.
It's like anything, Pete.
But who could have controlled it so that they would have got better information, so there wasn't that type of escalation?
I mean, that was all coming from private people who maybe didn't have the right information.
They saw the planning packet for Wednesday night, they pulled a proposed concept plan, thought it was cut and rocked, they posted it to media, Facebook, and it went off like fire. One of the comments was, why are you giving them a tax abatement?
Yeah, I didn't, I got that question.
Well, one of the comments was, there's gonna be a Walmart built across the street.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah. No, it was, it was a busy couple of days, and I know, you know, Josh was certainly busy with things. But it is challenging, because similar to the city council packet, those planning commission packets are public knowledge. And when it went out, it was like a thirty-five-page packet. And what was cut, copied, and pasted and posted online was one page of a thirty-five-page packet. And, and again, to Mr. Clemens's point, that conceptual plan, that could change, you know.
And I mean, that's another reason to get a hold of us.
Yeah.
So we could dig the answers up and give them the right answer.
Well, I, you know, I talked to the landowner last night, and he admitted, hey, this is just what we think today.
Yeah.
Is it gonna end up like this? More than likely, probably not.
How many years ago did we see the plans for Fairway State Expansion?
Yeah.
They were detailed plans.
That's, that's a good example. We received a concept plan or detailed plan on that seven, eight, nine years ago.
I told somebody on the phone about that, yeah.
And it hasn't happened, yeah.
Well, I talked to this guy last night, and if I'm not mistaken, he said, you know, this could be forty years.
Yeah.
Four, zero years. And people didn't have all the information, and didn't grasp the concept that it was a conceptual plan, and they read one page out of thirty-five.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, your average resident isn't gonna know the whole process of the planning. You know, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I can see where they just see that document and go, oh, my gosh, they're putting in light industrial right behind my house.
Well, I think the other point which was made last night, they had somebody who didn't come, and they emailed you their comments.
Yeah.
Which were turned over to the planning commission, and, and they made it a point last night to say that those emails would be included.
As a public record.
Yeah.
Correctly so, yeah.
Right. So.
I'd like to, I'd like to give Josh kudos in this whole thing, because I, I was having a discussion with a couple of different people, and then one of them sent me a screenshot of an email that he sent to somebody, I'm not sure who it was to, I can't remember. And it said, "The information is not public information, as they are volunteers for the city. Should you have information or comment on the planning commission's case, you may submit them to myself and at Melissa Baker, and we will provide them to the commissioners."
And we did.
So, I mean, he, he's saying, "Give it to me, and I'll take care of it."
Yeah.
Which is easy.
Yeah.
I think one of the comments major in the planning commission, that I think is noteworthy. One of the audience people says, "You've got plenty of property throughout Lansing to build this stuff on." So, you know, I was there as a participant, not as a board member, but in my mind, I was thinking, and every one of the owners have declined to participate.
Yeah.
Right.
Without exception. They don't want to sell it because it's money in the bank. They don't want to develop it because it's too much hassle, and we can't force them.
Yeah.
Right.
That's a good point.
So if we find somebody that has the property, the desire, and the fortitude to move forward, I'm glad, I'm glad they're coming to us.
Well, if we tell them no, and the word gets out, you know, we're a dead duck.
Well, and back to soc-
They won't work with you.
And back to social media, I was on there at one point, and some, someone tagged the council meeting where we rezoned the property to the east of there, and said that this was that. And I commented, said, "Nope, you're way wrong. You better do your research before you put out false information." I actually got a little aggravated with that, so, you know, and when, and there was another comment about, "We're trying to keep secrets," and I lost my temper on that when I blew up that person, so I have to stay off social media.
Again, the, the thing that's challenging, and I'll, I'll tell you guys this, that I were, there's going to be another rezone on McIntyre, coming from a private property owner on McIntyre. So it's, it's going to continue to be confusing, and maybe at some point, staff can work on getting some type of almost aerial map that shows this is being proposed as residential. It is next to this, which is mixed use, which is across the street from this, which is whatever. So, it will be confusing for residents, but we'll, we'll try to, you know, help them understand what's being proposed.
It'd be good to remind the residents that the comprehensive plan was a citywide plan. We had committees from the residents, council members, everybody. Those folks laid out what the future land use looks like way out, right, within our growth area. All of that that got zoned last night was in, in compliance with the comprehensive plan, which is one of the things the planning commission checks when they go through their checks. You know, is this the land use that we had planned for that area? So, it's all part of the process. They just, I, I have a feeling like most residents don't understand the process, and that's probably why they're getting frustrated, so. The more information we can put out about how the process works, and what we can and can't, can't really tell people how to, you know, that they can't ask to have their property rezoned.
No.
I, I think we do a great job of putting out the information. I think the problem is this. I mean, look at the audience we have right now. I mean, nobody, crickets.
It wouldn't impugn-
But I wouldn't be here if we didn't have a meeting.
What's that?
Freezing out. What, are you kidding me?
I think, I think one of the confusion points on this one is it's right on the border of city and Wyandotte and Leavenworth and Delaware. And some of the people that were coming into the planning commission had just heard it on Facebook, and they live next door to it in Delaware. So, you know, they said, you know, "You're building this big," in their mind, you know, it's humongous industrial park that's gonna be cranking out cars or whatever. You know, they didn't have any concept of industrial other than worst case. And I don't know how we can tell neighbors that this is coming up when they're not in the city limits.
And so, I know, again, part of the procedure, if someone is in city limits, we send out letters to everybody within two hundred feet. If it's outside of city limits, that, that linear amount goes up, but I don't remember what it is off the top of my head.
But we do send letters.
We do send letters. It might be five hundred or a thousand feet. I, Josh would know that. But we do send letters to people outside of city limits, and the distance goes up when people are outside of city limits.
I know somebody who got a letter outside of the city limits on the opposite side of McIntyre.
Yeah.
East of the project area, so.
Yeah, so I mean, we, yeah, it's, there's, there is a distance amount where we do send letters, yeah.
I was, I was unaware that we did it even outside the city limits, so that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I, we only had one thing on the agenda tonight, so I was kind of hoping we'd set a record. So this is, this is my bad for extending the council meeting, so that's all I have.
I'll make a note of that. Thanks, Ken.
Missed opportunity, Ken.
Alright, we'll fill around the horn. Gene?
I think I've said enough for tonight.
Alright, thanks, Gene, Jake.
Uh, well, I do have something. Like, a couple of us went up, I went to the planning commission meeting last night, and I jotted down a, a quick thing I was thinking about when I was stewing when I got home. So I want to just put this out publicly, and this is just my opinion, that future land use maps and comprehensive plans are living documents. They're intended to evolve over time in response to changing conditions, community needs, and policy priorities. They are not law, they're not policies, they're not doctrines. Our most recent versions are over thirteen years old and are not reflective of the current infrastructure or today's economic environment. Current data, market trends, and community goals must be considered when we're making decisions. That's all I have.
That's well said.
We have a volunteer for the comprehensive plan committee. Thank you very much.
The chair.
Thanks. Jesse?
Good point.
Pete?
Ken, just great job on the city for getting the snow cleaned up, and doing a great job for our citizens. That's all I have.
Thanks. Dan?
Well, I want to thank Tim and the staff for getting the Fire District One book packet to the county commissioners to finish doing the Fire District One work with them. Because of weather, LCPA was canceled, so that's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Carrie?
Well said, Jake. That's all I have.
Alright.
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Alright, thanks. Ken?
As, the allegiance continues to grow, and Piper and Baser are benefiting from that. And the area off of 435 to the east, that little, where 45 is, is growing. And the state-funded money that's coming that for, to straighten out Highway Five to get to 435, it is not surprising that the southern end of town is attracted to the developers. And that's probably why we're seeing action over there, so. And with that, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call roll.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Garby?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.